Well, you're right. She's turning it again.
Can you hear us, Sheila? Right, we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Now, we can, yes.
Perfect.
All right, the time is seven oh one PM and I will call the meeting to order. May we have roll call please?
Mayor Riechel.
Here.
Pro Tem Hennerhan.
Here.
Trustee Brettinall.
Here.
Trustee Claussen.
Here.
Trustee Inglehart.
Here.
Trustee Poston.
Here.
Trustee Seifert.
Here.
All right, may we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. First item on the agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program, or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items.
No, I did not hear from anyone.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands.
All right, and in the chambers here. Do you have anyone signed in?
We do.
Okay.
We have Yesenia Silva Estrada and Lindsay Williams to talk about transportation.
Okay. If you guys would like to come up to the table and state your name and address.
Did I get the name right?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Trustees. My name is Yesenia Silva Estrada. I live at twenty-one fifty-one West Sabina Lane. I was raised in the Ring Fork in Colorado River Valley, and for the past six years, I have been a proud homeowner here in Silt. I'm also a mother of a five-year-old and a fourteen-year-old, both growing up right here in our town. I wanted today to urge you to consider investing in finding more robust and reliable public transportation options, particularly for our youth. My oldest son, who accompanies me today, is fourteen and also neurodivergent. He's in an age where independence and social interaction are critical to his growth and the mental health. Yet, if he wants to go to Rifle, to go to the pool, to the gym, visit the movie theater, visit our local outdoor recreation areas like Rifle Falls, or even access more robust public library programming in Newcastle Rifle, he just can't unless someone drives him. We don't have a safer, accessible way for teens like him to get around, and that leaves many of our young people isolated, disconnected, and frankly, left behind. This isn't just a matter of convenience, it's a matter of youth mental health and community well-being. I work in Glenwood Springs, and like many families in our town, I commute, but public transportation is not as reliable and consistent option for working parents either. Our valleys interconnected economically, socially, and recreationally, but without access to transportation, Silt residents, especially our youth, are cut off from opportunity. I urge the town of Silt to explore and invest in solutions that connect our community, not just to Glenwood, but within our own town and neighborhood areas like Rifle and Newcastle. And this could look like regional partnerships, youth-focused transit programs, or even a pilot initiative to start in the summer months. Our own people deserve access, they deserve connection, and they deserve to grow up in a town that sees their needs and acts on them. Thank you so much for your time and for your service to the community.
Hi, everyone. Lindsay Williams, two-five-eight South Golden Drive. I'm here tonight to also make a public comment on the general topic of transportation. I am president of the Rifle Area Mountain Biking Organization, and that role has provided me a seat at the table of a few groups who are working on transportation initiatives in our region, such as the Safe Streets Alliance in Rifle. Community organizing around this topic has encouraged us to use the public comment section at our local meetings in order to bring this up, to kind of plant the seed to start talking about it. They've encouraged us to just share our lived experiences with transportation in the area. Personally, I'd love it if there was a better way for me to be able to get to work up at Holy Cross in Glenwood Springs, or to be able to get down to a show at the Youth Theater. My organization hosted a movie night last Thursday. Thank you, Trustee Hennerhan, for coming out to that, and we invited the Middle School Mountain Bike Club to also attend that event. And it would have been great if there would have been maybe some transportation options, like Yesenia was saying, to get more kids down there to see these films and to really build community in that way. So as you get ready to, you know, review the final housing needs assessment tonight, I'd encourage you to think about the larger infrastructure impacts and the mobility requirements that that housing needs assessment is going to require. I also sit on the Board of LEVA, the Lower Valley Trails Alliance, and we've heard a lot about the future of mobility in our region and Silt, like quite literally being at the epicenter of it all in the Colorado River Valley. Like as electric bikes and vehicles merge into really great public transit options, it's really not that far-fetched to think about somebody maybe living in Silt and commuting to work in Rifle or Newcastle, or even as far as Glenwood Springs, on a paved path one day using electric infrastructure. Thank you for your time tonight. I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else for public comment?
No, sir.
That's it. Okay, all right. Thank you, everybody, for participating tonight, so. Next up, we have the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of the March fourth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Trustees meeting, the retail liquor license renewal for Tassana Inc., DBA Silt Liquor, the fermented malt beverage liquor license renewal for Good-to-Go Store number seven oh one, Resolution number twelve, series twenty-twenty-five, Resolution adopting the Town of Silt Employee Handbook, revised April twenty-twenty-five, Resolution number thirteen, series twenty-twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the submittal of a MMOF grant application for the Town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado, and Resolution number fourteen, series twenty-twenty-five, a resolution amending the employment contract with the Town Administrator within the Town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. Would anyone like to discuss any one of those, or make a motion?
I have a question on Resolution thirteen.
Okay.
I guess, Director Lundeen, I know it's for sidewalks, but what exactly is there, what else is?
It'll, that's the whole road.
Okay.
It'll be new asphalt, the new drain pan there in the center.
Uh-huh.
And also, it'll be, just be sidewalks on the north side of Grand, and that should complete Grand, or Orchard, excuse me, from Sixteenth all the way to the school.
Okay. Nice. Yeah, no, that's a project that's been needing to be done for a while now.
Okay. And I have a question for Lori or Clark McIntyre, I'm not sure, who wants to answer this one. For the Good-to-Go Store number seven oh one, they did have a issue with selling to a minor. I may be mistaken, but I believe that this store has had that issue once before in the past. So, does there become a point where the board can deny renewing a liquor license due to those incidents?
And I don't recall the prior one. I'd have to go back and look at the records, but if there is a time where we do feel it's necessary to bring the applicant forward, we would have what they call a show cause hearing and ask them to appear before the board so that their application or their license can be renewed by the board to discuss the problems that have been taking place.
Okay. All right. I just think if we're working on ways to keep cigarettes later out of children's hands, then maybe we need to also be tougher with our enforcement of our liquor licenses, so. Other than that, I have no other questions or comments, so.
No.
Anybody else, or would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
No second.
All right. Motion by Trustee Seifert to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Trustee Claussen. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
No, sir.
None here.
I have none either. Any agenda changes?
No, sir.
From the staff, anything from the board?
Nothing here.
Okay. Now then, we'll move right on to the water plant construction update with Dan Galvin with Garni Construction.
Thank you. Dan Galvin with Garni Construction. Update for this month on the construction progress across the street, across the highway there at the water treatment plant. Health and safety. Again, like to report that we have no incidents to date at the site. We continue to work well with plant staff and visitors. They're wearing proper PPE, high-visibility clothing, and that is important as of late. We've had a lot of heavy equipment moving around the site, and with the single road through the property, it's important that everyone stays visible, makes eye contact with operators, and not walk behind equipment. Weather awareness has shaped up a little bit. We monitor wind a bit with, as of late, and then now, spring weather. Not so much the snow buildup, but just the wind blowing some moisture in here and there, something we're keeping an eye on. Part of that is good housekeeping around the site and then securing materials to not blow off. Our construction progress, since we met last, last month, the metal building erection continues. We saw some of the steel going up last time, so now all the steel's essentially up, and they are skinning the building with the insulated metal wall panels. As of now, all the wall panels are up, and next week, they'll look to get the roof on the structure. And so they continue with some roughing items and then some of the trim around the openings. Moving forward, with the work that's getting completed with the metal building, membrane roofing in our intersection there over some of the chemical area, windows and doors over the next few weeks, and that allows to weather in the building, so they say, so that we can move on to interior coatings. As well, we continue to receive process equipment on-site. We'll get that installed as it gets weathered in, and the metal building guys get out of the way to create a safe workspace. As we mentioned previous, we're essentially letting those guys have their run of the place just due to the hazards associated with their activities. As well, we continue with some site civil work, moving some dirt around the site, improving some roadways, and soon, some seed will be put down so that we can manage water runoff in some areas that are near-complete or areas that we won't be in anymore, so we can put that down, let that take, to prevent soil running off the site. Regarding schedule, we continue to maintain good pace out there. Last few weeks, just some minimal weather impacts, a lot of it we were able to work through. Some of it, the guys were able to start in the morning, and as weather did not break up, we moved off-site for protection and to keep the guys safe. As mentioned, there's kind of some start-to-finish activities, again, just with the stuff that's going on. Our metal building guys flying panels through a crane, or moving a forklift around site to get that stuff into place, just giving them lots of room to prevent injury. And then we continue to track September's performance startup. I know, I thought about the other day, putting my minutes together. Last month, we asked about some of the, our water interruptions or process interruptions, and to be sure that we're prepared for those things to put in a minimal impact on the ratepayers in town, and so we were successful there. We moved one of two of the water, of the skids that produce the water now, in like it was maybe an eight-hour shutdown. Got that piece of equipment moved a couple feet in one direction so that it allows us to get, get into an area where we have more work, and then this will prevent further shutdowns. As well, when we go to, we've mentioned before, transfer over from the new plant and get into the existing plant to do some demolition work, this will help that process so that we can keep making water uninterrupted as well. Regarding budget, contingency log updates. We talked previous about how we were looking at an inlet screening. After further review from consultants and the engineering team, the plant staff and the consultants decided to go a different direction there, and so in lieu of the initial plan for the screening, we're gonna, the plant staff and engineering staff's gonna look to do some electrical improvements out at the inlet to help with pumping there, and then look to do some pump and electrical improvements with the distribution pumps to help with older equipment that's in that location. So, their engineers dive into those items, so no, no real cost comparison yet, but they're diving into those, and with our nearing the end of construction, they're putting emphasis on getting data for that over to Garni so that we can start chasing some numbers on that and get that equipment, at least through the submittal and approval process. So look to update those items there. And then to date, thirteen point eight million out of the twenty-four build, which is just around fifty-six percent. And so with that, glad to open it up for questions.
I guess you answered the one question, how the transition went. How many more of those do you think will have interruptions? Just either you or Joe, I mean, is there more of those, and they're gonna be about the same amount of time, or?
Yes, there's probably at least two more, and then, you know, it was discussed early on that the timeline the plant was comfortable with, so no more than a one-day shutdown is anything that we prepare or plan for.
Okay.
Yep.
That was my only question.
I don't have anything.
Anything, okay.
I don't think I have any questions.
I got two questions.
Yes, sir.
So, I could be wrong. So I believe we, there are some tanks that we poured below ground, correct?
Yes, there is one.
Okay. Any concern with that as the spring runoff comes? Is that tank full so it doesn't float?
I am not the engineer, but no, there's no concern with that, that tank floating. I would think that with the, as much concrete is on the floor and the walls of that thing, and now we have the floor on top of it as well that's connected to it, that its weight by itself should keep it in place. And then, we, you know, we talked about it early on when we were digging for that and watching water come through, and then as we backfilled, we slowly took our dewatering wells out to allow that, that area to, for the water to come back in. So with, with the experience we have now on-site, you know, that groundwater is always there. Yes, it rises a bit during the spring runoff, but we don't see a concern for it.
Okay.
And then with the progress we're going now, the pumps are showing up next week to go inside of that tank. There's a couple mechanical guys that we've recently brought on-site to assist with installing pipe and fittings. So we'll be in a position, you know, I guess, in concurrence with the runoff to be able to put water in there and get that, part of that system under test.
Okay.
But I can follow up with the engineer, that's a good one.
All right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just know, I know pools in the south stay in the ground as long as they have water, and we take the water out, and they want to float, so I just want to make sure we're not gonna blow that thing out of the ground before we get anything inside of it. And then the second one is just a, just a construction question, I guess. Most of the time you see steel buildings go up, they're, they're red iron or red steel. This one appears to be galvanized?
Correct, galvanized.
Is there a reason?
Part of it probably to avoid some, some coatings, because it's all, it's all interior and it all remain exposed. Often, I think, when you think of skyscrapers and such, yes, the shop, shop primed, so essentially that steel comes in primed, painted primed, and then usually a fireproofing material's added to it, or that steel is buried behind plaster walls or other things, so it's not visible. In our instance, the steel remains visible all the time inside the building, so the galvanizing is a more architectural appeasing finish there.
Okay. I didn't know if it's an architectural thing, or if it was because we got some caustic chemicals in the air that maybe it protects the steel?
That could be a little bit of it. The area, like the CMU, most of the chemicals are inside the CMU building.
Okay.
So, you know, firewall separation there, and then write a more robust material in the cement mortar blocks than the other area. There is chemical injection in those areas, but it's, it's more contained versus our chemical air in the CMU buildings.
Okay. All right. That's the only two questions I had, so.
I have one question for the board.
Okay.
Is there a desire at the board level to tour the site at any point now that it? Early on, there wasn't much to see because it was all underground work.
Right.
If you haven't gone down and seen it, it's a pretty impressive building, and we'd be happy to schedule something if that's something that the board wanted to actually do.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to.
I would like to.
Yes. I mean, yeah, obviously, definitely when it's done, but yeah, sure.
Well, we'll, we'll let you go see it when it's done, too. All right, we'll get something on one of our meeting calendars, and we'll coordinate with Dan to make it happen.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No.
Comments? All right. Thank you, Dan, for coming in again.
Great. Thank you very much.
See you again soon. All right, next up is the Silt Housing Needs Analysis Final Presentation. I will turn it over to Manager Man.
Okay, we have, I'll get it right, Oscar Sosado Andrade and Melissa Ruth from our consultant team. Oscar is with Eco Northwest, and Melissa Ruth is with Logan Simpson to give you a final presentation on our housing needs analysis. I'll turn it over to the two of you.
Okay, we'll let you guys take it away.
Thank you for having us. Oscar Sosado Andrade, Project Manager at Eco Northwest, and then Melissa Ruth with me from Logan Simpson. Next slide, please. So, today's agenda is mostly going over the project overview at a high level, and then kind of like presenting you guys the housing needs assessment overview, and then the land use code recommendations. Next slide. Just starting briefly with the purpose of this project, so the ten objectives for doing this. Housing study is to understand current housing conditions, but also document housing gaps and identify housing needs. And kind of like part of this outcome of the study is to develop policy and zoning code recommendations as well as complying with State Senate Bill twenty-four one seventy-four requirements, which basically requires state jurisdictions to conduct housing needs assessment for their, for their jurisdictions. And then also wanted to add one other thing to it. Part of conducting the housing needs assessment will allow the town to access, type into Prop one-two-three funding for eligible projects, so this could entail down payment assistance, new construction, or acquisition and rehab projects, mobile home preservation programs, and amongst others. So, here in this slide, you will see kind of like an overview of the whole housing needs assessment process. We started the, the project with a kickoff meeting with staff and Logan Simpson. We started in September of twenty-twenty-four, and we quickly transitioned into community and stakeholder engagement. Part of the stakeholder and community engagement, we've conducted an online questionnaire. We heard from over two hundred residents, as well as conducted one-on-one, one-on-one conversations in person with key stakeholders. We connected with about thirteen community stakeholders. This, they, they were a combination of residents, developers, business owners, and local organizations leaders. And so, part of the housing needs assessment was also reviewing existing plans and policies to make sure that the study was in line with previous plans that the city has adopted, and then went straight into the housing needs assessments, which included projecting housing need for the town in, for the next ten years based on population and household growth. And then, kind of like, we culminated the project with land use code recommendations, which Logan Simpson helped us out and completed the project early, early this month. Next slide. Here, I'm just gonna like go over at a high level the main themes that we heard from the community engagement process of the HNA. So I'll touch on each of these. So what we heard was that there was a shortage of overall units, so there is a shortage of all unit types in Silt. Community members identified a need for all residential unit types and sizes across all income categories. Community also voiced that there was this shortage of variety of units. So, while there is a shortage of all unit types, interviewees noted a distinct need for quality rental options and small ownership units. Overall, community felt that there was a shortage of affordable units as well. Community members noted that Silt remains the most affordable option in the valley, but prices are increasing due to higher demand and increased prices up in the valley. Also, in discussions with local developers, but also in reviewing the previous plans of the town, kind of like we've noticed that the new development has largely occurred in areas of the edge of the town or in the county rather than in downtown, where the comprehensive plan has identified as a focus for development in downtown. Discussions with developers, they noted some regulatory interpretation inconsistencies. Developers that have submitted applications noted inconsistencies in interpreting the regulations, and as well as noted lengthy application review timeframes. Moving on to kind of like what community members talked about when we've asked them about what their future is for housing in Silt. Community members envisioned a balanced housing market that allows young professionals to stay, seniors to age in place, and families to thrive in the community. And then, support for policies, several residents overall supported policies that increase rental housing options and assist cost burden households. That is, kind of like defined as households who spent more than thirty percent of their income on housing. Next slide, please. Onto the housing need analysis. Next slide. So this slide here summarizes the catch-up housing need. So the analysis for estimating the catch-up need addresses eliminating overcrowding and correcting for a functional vacancy rate for Silt. So, for addressing these, there is about eight units needed for addressing overcrowding in Silt, and about thirty-six units needed for correcting, and for correcting for functional rental and ownership market. So in total, the total catch-up need, so that is kind of like defined as what Silt needs currently to keep up with existing demand, and for addressing overcrowding and a low vacancy rate is forty-four units. I do want to note that compared to other communities that we've been working with, doing housing needs assessments, Silt is doing fairly okay. doing housing needs assessments, Silt is doing fairly okay compared to other jurisdictions who really need substantial housing units just to catch up. Next slide, please. This slide here, the summary of keep-up housing need. So this slide represents the number of new dwelling units needed in order for accommodating for its population and household growth in the next 10 years. So what we did for Silt was we looked at previous plans such as the water master plan, which had some projections of population, and used those population projections to make sure that the housing needs assessment is in line with those projections. And took out what was the population growth in the next 10 years in 2035 for a low and median growth scenario, which the master plan, water master plan includes. And so created kind of like a range of housing units based on what the expected either low or median growth scenario are for Silt. So overall, between 245 and 674 units are needed to keep up with future household growth and population growth. So this equates to about 25 to 68 units annually in the next 10 years. So just a note, based on data that we receive from the town, that town has averaged about 24 units per year. So if you're looking at the low growth scenario, you're not that far off. But if you're looking at the median scenario, there's you're almost needing triple. You're gonna see about triple the development needed to accommodate that median growth Next slide. And so this table here summarizes both the catch-up and keep-up need needed for Silt, but broken out by the different household area median income categories. And so it also is broken out by the owner and rental units needed for both the low and median growth scenarios. So in total, when you add up the catch-up and keep-up need, it is between 289 new units to 718 new units needed in the next 10 years for Silt. Next slide, and I'll turn over the land use code recommendations to Melissa.
Thank you. Some of these slides will look familiar from the last meeting, but we wanted to kind of highlight the recommendations overview. And the way that we broke these out, these are just the land use code recommendations. So they're broken out into three kind of buckets in order to kind of look at, they all have a slightly different impact, but but all kind of live again within the land use code. So the first bucket is removing barriers to housing provision. So looking at the ways that the code may or may not be creating a barrier to just providing housing or constructing housing. And what we noticed is that there is an opportunity to reduce the number of special uses within the use table and allow a greater variety of what's called missing middle housing types by right. So that's some of the smaller units and some of the kind of apartment or duplex or cottage type home, you know, you're not things that are slightly different than your single family detached units. In a lot of places, those are identified as either special uses or just flat out prohibited. There's also an opportunity to revise the dimensional requirements to allow for greater flexibility in the housing products. These two recommendations look to remove barriers to allow for the market to provide housing units rather than for the town to have to do additional kind of things. So these are not adding additional layers to your code, but actually removing existing things that might might be leading to fewer housing units. The next bucket is the rightsizing standards for residential development. So this this bucket takes a little bit more time to kind of look at what these existing standards are doing, and this is revising your architectural standards and the design criteria for commercial and multifamily structures. So one of the things we heard a lot from the development community through the interviews was that the design standards are more intense and some there was some inconsistency in how some of those points were applied, what things counted, whether you had to go through the HOA, and then if you met the criteria in your HOA, did you still meet the design standards? Just some interesting conversations. And as we were kind of looking around, we had some of the questions of does are these architectural design standards needed? They are fairly lengthy for a community of this size, I would say. So more of a topic to continue discussing if you do need those design standards or if there's an opportunity to kind of streamline some of those and pull some of the pieces out. Again, kind of a lengthy process, looking at what your development is on the ground that you like, but it is an option. The other one that I know the town's had a lot of conversation about is reviewing the parking requirements. There's a lot of different models out there that you can kind of take a look at to provide more flexibility in parking, not necessarily reducing or adding parking requirements, but providing a little bit of flexibility where needed. So those two standards, as I've as you've kind of could probably guess, add more flexibility in your regulations. And then last but not least is overall housing policy discussion. So there is a need to update the comprehensive plan. It's from 2017. We do recommend the comprehensive plan be updated every five to 10 years. So you're right on the back end of that 10 years. Oh, go back one more. And then increasing density allowances to match the comprehensive plan designations. There are a few places where the comprehensive plan does identify a higher density than what the town zoning districts allow for. And last but not least, considering density bonuses for affordable housing units, something that the comp plan and the code don't currently contemplate, but something to kind of talk about as a big picture housing policy discussion. Can go to the next slide. I said most of this already, but the removing barriers to housing provision again look to allow more residential units by right. And then same with the dimensional requirements. We noticed most of the kind of conversation for both of these is within the R1, R2, and R3 districts, reducing the minimum lot sizes and removing the minimum unit size requirements in those zone districts. Again, these two recommendations look to allow the market to provide more those housing units by simply removing the barrier to provision. This standard or the rightsizing of the architectural standards, I did kind of go through this already, but there is another opportunity to consider relief from specific design standards for housing that provides units within targeted AMI. So those units that you're looking to get more of, there are communities that do kind of lessen those architectural design standards or provide relief from specific ones if you're meeting that community need. And then the overall housing policy discussions, again, this is part of a much larger conversation of kind of the direction of housing policy. You can you can add the regulatory changes and or remove certain barriers within your code, but overall, there's still kind of the discussion of if you want to add incentives, add additional policies and programs to support housing. So it's not all kind of land use code focused. And that's what this this recognizes that that there's key policy questions of is the development occurring in the right place? Are we seeing the right type of development to meet the current and future needs? And is there a need for density bonuses for deed restricted affordable housing? Sometimes there's not, some communities don't go that way, and that's fine. But it is kind of an option out there, and taking a look at kind of your whole menu of options is what this this recommendation is. Next slide. Okay, any questions?
I had a question on the overcrowding. What what basically defines that?
Good question. So there's national standards by the HUD office, and so that is defined as any any households with, what is it, more, so there's the number of people per room within a housing unit. So if the ratio is more than one person to more than one room in a housing unit, then by HUD standards, that's considered overcrowding if it's more than a one-to-one ratio.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I don't have a question, but I do have just a comment by going into the housing need analysis meeting. We have conversations with the group to have brought up to the attention of some areas in R3 that some construction types are prohibited. It is kind of eye-opening for us to analyze going forward the comp plan, how we see Silt, you know. Obviously, there may be areas that we can open up for multifamily housing and that is currently not allowed right now. So questions like that, how do we envision some of those areas to be developed in the future and to see if the overall population would be opening to have some of those buildings being brought up there to allow for those types of developments? And, you know, for that, it's definitely best if we have the population participation and feedback to find out how we can create that vision and come up and make those code changes and policy changes. But one portion of it that brought up to my attention, just potentially from being customer service also, a lot of my working life is we are we are serving the population and a lot of times we are working with, you know, these companies that are those developers. And it is massive, the amount of extra work to create, you know, on their side, special permits, more so when they, you know, not that we want to just simply facilitate every development, but we want to seek ways that aligns with the vision within those codes that will allow also developers to work well with the town. That was a little eye-opening for me to have that point of view once we are making policies and making those decisions to think of, you know, because developers sometimes they they can, but if the process becomes too difficult, sometimes there's too much hindrance into completing the projects. And to finalize in conversations with the group as well, some of those developments, we, you know, they've seen in their own experience take up 10 years, 20 years. And while I anticipate fast growth for developments in Silt, especially because we have a lot of things in process that could equal a good number of units within, you know, hopefully not 10 years or 20 years, hopefully before that. As we move along and we look into additional process and policy change to look into a roundup vision where we are making policies that are not making the building process
Anybody else?
I guess out of curiosity, did you guys get any feedback on metro districts? Because we have one on the east side of town, which obviously makes, you know, everything more expensive there. I just didn't know if you had anybody taken the survey, you know, mentioned that, or I guess what is your take on those?
In the survey questionnaire, we did not get any comments, inputs on metro districts. No.
Okay.
I'll just answer the bit of the question. Metro districts by form don't necessarily make things more expensive. It's a different way of financing some of the infrastructure. And it puts it instead of on the developer upfront, it puts it on the residents over a longer period of time. But by nature, it doesn't necessarily make it more expensive. It just is a difference in terms of how that expense comes to fall back on the end user.
Okay.
Now, that's the political answer. The other answer is that sometimes metro districts do make things more expensive. If you don't pay attention to what your metro district is doing, it can actually increase costs.
Yeah, there's that case over in the front range where, yeah.
There's a few cases that you could point to.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, you know, if anybody mentioned anything.
Yeah, you know, I think the bottom line is with metropolitan districts is most people really don't understand what the metropolitan district does. All they see is the additional tax rate that they're paying over a period of time.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not a fan of them, but that's just me.
I guess one one thing I think about is people are sometimes sort of averse to the tall apartment buildings in the little town, but the growth, I think, is going to happen to us. And so then if all we're gonna allow is like a one-story, single-family, I mean, the that leads to much worse congestion than allowing for three-story buildings in the downtown. So to me, I think if we're gonna facilitate growth wisely, we should allow for more congestion where we want it so that it's, you know, I think it's just great information. And I think that's an example of something where we should probably consider being way less or not way less restrictive, but just thinking about what's gonna happen, where we're gonna put all the new houses on top of each other, maybe.
I like some of the suggestions in the remove barriers to housing provision, slide number 12, reducing minimum lot sizes. The second sub-bullet there about removing minimum unit size, I don't necessarily think it should be removed, but revised. And I do have some concerns about residential uses by right. I think that that's that's a tricky area that we need to be cautious about. But I do think we need to revisit density. And whether we do that in R1, R2, R3, or under the guise of a of an R4, of an additional or new one, such that we're not retroactively trying to enforce it against people who've already been in those other areas or that were previously zoned as R1, R2, R3. I think there's a lot of value in reducing a lot of our design criteria as a bit of a negotiation point with developers to say if you have some affordable units, we can reduce the design criteria specifications for your whole project. We we can create sort of a, I'm gonna oversimplify this, like a density bonus, almost like a buffet type menu where if you can help us meet some of these requirements, we can help reduce some of your costs or complexities of development. I think if if we had a document that we could share with some of our larger developers that are coming up sooner rather than later, it would help ensure that they're successful, but also ensure at the same time that we are successful in maintaining the quality of the community that we're going to be beholden to. And I think getting this is a key first step, which leads to the question, what's our next step? What are we going to do with this document? How are we going to bring about change? Please, not all at once. But that that's now we've got it, right? We've got the ingredients.
Yes, but, you know, many things like you were just saying, we've been kind of hashing around for years. We just got to get to the point where we actually make that change.
And part of bringing this to the forefront was the state requirements for funds for Prop 123. We want to talk about getting some funds for new mobile homes and down payment assistance and things like that, which goes in alignment with designing those policies later on. So it was nice to have all of those options and changes, possible changes that we can discuss through analyze, apply or not apply and change. But this is just the next ingredient for the next step because without this housing need analysis, we couldn't potentially move forward with funds that we will that we will need to complete the process, like step process. And we'll keep moving the needle all around. I know sometimes it doesn't feel like we're making a lot of movement, but it is step by step, and this was one important one.
Maybe I'm just the lawyer in me, but I think we need to do the codes, get the codes really written out nicely, because that sets the precedent for everything. You know, what, what kind of development is gonna go where, what we wanna encourage and not encourage, and so, I mean.
I think we can reprioritize them and challenge those codes. Is there always gonna be changing? Not necessarily always with the same speed, but there's no finish line. So maybe we use this as an opportunity to reprioritize things that align with these outcomes when that, when that committee gets together. You know, we recently did parking, but there are some other ones here. I just, what I, what I meant when I asked the larger question, what are we gonna do next? I want us to start coming up with those small things. So maybe at the next code subcommittee, we reprioritize based on these findings.
Which is when, by the way?
The code committee typically meets prior to the planning and zoning committee, commission. So I think, you know, there, there's really two areas that we need to focus on. One is the code rewrites, but it's also the updating of the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan is a key component that, right now, there's a bit of a disconnect between our zoning code and the comp plan that was adopted in 2017. We need to make sure that anything we change in chapters 16 and 17 are going to align with our comprehensive plan. And there's some areas in our comprehensive plan that, quite frankly, we need to revisit and look at, are they still in alignment with where the board wants the community to go? And where the community wants the community to go. It's not just the board. This is a, you know, hopefully a collaborative effort with the community along the way. But I think, you know, you asked the question, what's the next steps? I think there's kind of a two-pronged approach. One, it's dropping this document in the lap of not only the code committee, but also planning and zoning. But I think there's a, a more global look that this body needs to think about in a work session and maybe drill down into, here's the five things we want to accomplish in the next six months. And, and where do we, where, where do we wanna take it? So I think, I mean, that's, I think, your next step is getting this to the planning and zoning and the code committee, but then also taking the time at a work session to really drill down into some of these recommendations.
Because codes are really kind of unhelpful if you're not sure about what you're actually trying to accomplish. So that's a great point.
And I would say, I would argue that our code is some, sometimes mind-numbing.
Well, one of the things that Karen, who brought it up, someone had made the recommendation too, that before we make any changes to any existing codes and things, we do some research and look back onto why they were made what they are now, so that we're not changing something and causing a problem that they were designed to fix, to make sure that we're not, to make sure we've learned from the past. We aren't, we don't just make, we don't make a knee-jerk reaction to fix something we see now, but then bring back a problem that we thought we corrected.
You know, I think a prime example of that is some of the architectural review standards. The vast majority of homes in their current construct in the river, the old town area, you couldn't build them today. They don't meet the architectural control standards. The question is, do those standards apply everywhere? Do they only apply to certain areas? And how do we maybe adjust them to? I, I think one of the recommendations is, certain areas and in certain zone districts and certain sized lots, maybe you have to narrow those down a little bit. Doesn't mean that if you're building a full-out subdivision where your houses are gonna be in that upper echelon of cost, maybe those design control standards are still there.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to, the trend is gonna be, as a builder, I can tell you, it's gonna be multifamily. I mean, I can build with, because of the price of the lot and everything. I mean, I can do a fourplex way cheaper than I can do four, single-family. So I think that's somewhere we gotta look at the codes, you know, what, like you said, whether we're gonna have to do a four, six, I don't know. But I think that's where, one of the things that's gonna start happening, and it is.
I think one of the most telling pieces of information is that our household median income is $100, $110,000. The average price of our housing stock is over $500,000. The math does not work for the average median income to be able to afford that $525,000 house. That's our, that's the problem that I think we're solving for. Doesn't mean we're saying goodbye to owner-occupied homes. It doesn't mean that we're not gonna have nice structures, but that's kind of our issue. And we can't necessarily control the median income.
You actually just touched on, the point I was gonna bring up was, this study report was done off of Garfield County's AMI. That includes Glenwood, Carbondale. I would assume that Silt is much lower than.
Actually, you drilled, I think if I remember correctly, you were able to drill down to Silt's median income. But it wasn't based on the counties.
So the affordability that we did was on, based on Garfield County's AMI. That's mostly due to a lot of like affordability programs, statewide, federal-wide. They refer to the county's AMI.
But if I recall correctly, we're pretty close to the.
Yeah, correct.
In fact, I, if I remember the statistics, we may have been over the median income for the county. They're close. They're very close. They're very close.
Okay, that's good to know. Because I do, I do think the first place we need to start is the comp plan. Housing is always, you know, we have local, state, federal governments saying, this is how housing is calculated, you need this many units of this, this, and this to fill the need of your community. But is what everyone's saying we need actually the vision of the community? Do we maybe not want any more subdivisions with three-acre lots? Do we want more multifamily? Because how you choose to do this dictates the future of this town. So while it says we need this number of units at this level, is that really what the town of Silt wants? So I think the comp.
It's a very valid point, yes.
The comp plan is the place to start and see what the vision of Silt is in 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years.
Yeah, because maybe we don't want high rises. Who knows?
Yeah, might want, yeah.
Define high-rise.
Four-plus stories.
Yeah.
Okay. But that's, that's a key component to fleshing out what is and is not allowable in the town. If anything above four stories, the community says, yeah, we're not gonna go there? Well, we're working with three and less.
But then my thought is, I, I would rather not have that in my little town. But would I rather have that, or would I rather have a bunch of single-story houses that just cover the land for as far as the eye can see, like urban sprawl, right? So that's why I'm like, maybe we should, yeah. So that's why I'm, I'm not like pro skyscraper.
At the end of the day, this is all gonna be about balancing.
Right, yeah.
And what's the right mix for the community? I mean, you have the data, you have the recommendations. Now, it's how is this gonna fit into our vision of the community? And what can we do? And what, what's a starter and what's a non-starter?
And I think, and my other, the other thing that I'm, I'm big on is telling people how much money they can make off their investment. So having a developer come in and say, I wanna build 12 single-family homes, knowing that they can make X amount. And the town tries to tell them, you need to make two of those affordable units and 10 of them free-market houses. And as a town, we're gonna limit the amount of money you can make off your investment. It's not the thing to do.
And I don't think that we would. I think it would be a voluntary thing where someone signs up for a density bonus by making the choice to go that. You know what I mean? So it's not something where we're.
But at the end of the day, developers' main goal is the profit on the investment. They, developers are not here to save the world and give us all the affordable housing we need. There are people to partner with, that that is where they take, where they are not investing to make those profits. And those groups, I think, are the ones that we need to work with for the affordable housing future.
Yeah, so that's a policy change, a policy conversation for later. What policies will the town of Silt be willing to enact in order to help, help ensure that we have some sort of affordable housing? So then there are different policies and approaches. And it's good to hear that there are strong feelings about specific ones, but this is definitely policy-wise, completely agree, having the housing need analysis, going through the comprehensive plan, and then discussing code. And within the code, also designing the policy of what affordable housing means, specifically for the town of Silt.
So when's our work session?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
And as usual, it sounds like Jim's on it.
It might take one or two work sessions.
It may take one or two. Actually, I mean, it's gonna take several.
10 or 15, yeah.
And I think one of the, the key considerations is trying to bake this ourselves or whether we want to have somebody facilitating some of those discussions. And I think, you know, we'll, we'll get this on the next work session agenda for a discussion, and we can flesh a little of that out at that discussion. But I do, I think the comp plan is probably the precursor to chapters 16 and 17. There is, there are pieces that can work in, you know, lockstep. But I think the comp plan in a lot of cases is primary.
Yeah. Great information.
Yes, great information. Anything else you guys would like to add?
Thanks for coming out.
I would, I would suggest that a motion by the Board of Trustees to accept the report and put it on, on file for consideration would be in order. Kind of brings this part of the process to a close.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the Silt Housing Needs Analysis Final Presentation as provided and add it into the record.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion by Mayor Protem Hanerhan to accept the Silt Housing Needs Analysis Final Presentation and move it into the record, and that was seconded by Trustee Ingelhart. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you guys for being here tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Oscar.
All right, up next, almost as contentious as housing is the waste and recycling collections contract discussion.
I'm not sure this is that contentious. As you know, from our recent conversation with the representatives from Mountain Waste, we are in the final year of a multi-year contract with them to provide waste hauling and recycling services. We have a couple of options. We can do an RFP and rebid and see what the market would bear. Or we could continue a relationship with Mountain Waste and renegotiate a contract going forward. We had talked about, or they had brought up, that the city of Rifle went through this last year, or in 2023, and the city chose to go out for new proposals, and their increase was about 14 and a half percent. If they had just renegotiated and stuck with the existing terms of the contract, they would have seen a 3.7% increase based on CPI. The other bid that they received was from Waste Management, and it was 51% higher than what their current contract was. So it was quite a bit more expensive. We have a very good working relationship with Mountain Waste. We receive so few complaints or problems. And as, as they say, a lot of those complaints and problems have to do with usually the male in the household forgetting to put the garbage out. And, you know, Mountain Waste coming in and saving the relationship. I mean, you, you didn't know that Mountain Waste was actually marriage counselors, but sometimes I think they are. So we have a very good working relationship with them based upon Rifle's experience. I, I think from staff's perspective, we should look to try to renegotiate the contract with Mountain Waste. I think the worst we're gonna do is exactly the same contract language that we have currently.
And I think they came in and did some verbiage to not potentially having a major increase. And we thought, we discussed about how well they were serving and changing may not be the best option. I remember them coming in and us having that discussion.
They did. They also talked about capital improvements that they were making to manage more of the trash and recycling processes in-house versus outsourcing, which would, which would increase their costs. So I think if sticking with them, if the level of service is high and we align with their strategic planning for insourcing a lot of those services, the juice is not worth the squeeze to try and go out and find another vendor to do it better and/or cheaper.
Yeah, as long as they, there's not a huge increase, which they said they were not looking into doing, I would open the conversation renegotiating the contract with them.
I was gonna say, if the internal negotiations don't turn out the way we want, then we could always decide to issue an RFP.
There you go.
We could always negotiate in good faith, but if we can't reach an agreement, okay, then in our, we still reserve the right to do that.
Okay, yes, yeah, I'm in favor of renegotiating.
Yep, I'm good with just moving forward with negotiations with who we have.
Okay, we'll, we'll take that, and we'll start, open the conversation with Mountain Waste.
Yeah, they've always been good to us at our events, you know. You need something there, right there, every time for no charge, or a lot of that's reasonable. So they've been really good with that, so.
Should be an info.
Instead of being an action item, should it just have been classified as an info item?
We're not perfect. Just, we've got some direction. We're good to go.
We've got you on the record now. You know that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you have my blessing.
Okay. You have your direction, so I guess we're good on that one. So the next item on the agenda is a second reading of ordinance number one, series 2025, an ordinance adopting chapter 5.20 to the Silt Municipal Code establishing licensing requirements for the retail sale of tobacco and nicotine products within the town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. And I will turn this over to Deputy Clerk. Or Clerk McIntyre.
Or Clerk.
She is not here tonight. I told her I would take the lead on this. There haven't been any changes since the first reading, and I would just answer any questions that you may have.
And I would just add that Peter Miller from the Tobacco Education Prevention Partnership is also in the audience and obviously may wish to speak during the public hearing.
I also wanted to introduce Dr. Nicole Feeny, who is a pediatrician for Grand Valley, and I'd like her to speak on behalf of the ordinance.
All right, if you could come up to the table.
I want to open the public hearing.
Thank you, guys, for having us here tonight. For those of you I haven't had the chance to meet, I'm Dr. Nicole Feeny. I work with Grand River Hospital. I also live in Silt. I've been here for 11 years. I'm the mom of four kids who have all been raised in Silt, including two teenagers still at home. I'm a pediatrician, an internist, and I do hospice and end-of-life care. So I have a really unique perspective on tobacco. To me, it's the most preventative issue that we have, that we face in healthcare. When we talk about 14 different cancers related to tobacco compared to eight related to obesity and eight related to alcohol use, it's just a staggering number. I think that this proposal is excellent in the way that it works to help insulate our youth against tobacco products. our youth against tobacco products. On the most recent healthy children's survey, up to 27% of kids reported having tried vaping and tobacco, which is an astonishing number. When you think that our town has just over 700 children under the age of 18, we're talking about kids in this survey starting at age 11, middle school through high school. 22% of them had tried a tobacco-related product under 13, and that's when we see the most severe nicotine addiction. As a healthcare provider, I have taken care of patients who, in fact, a gentleman today, started using tobacco at age five. So I see them, I see them all the time. I've had to take care of people at end of life, whether that be from head and neck cancers, lung cancer, COPD, very young, with people dying as young as their 40s from what would be preventable illnesses, and very much shortening their lifespan. As a mom, I would love to say that we do everything to protect our kids, but I can't always know what they're up to, and the more protections and safeguards that are in place, the better. I would love to be a perfect parent who knew absolutely every evil of my child, but that's impossible. There's four of them, they overtake me, and they rule the household. So I just think it's important to give people those tools. You know, I see parents who are desperate to do right by their kids in the office and trying to help them through, whether it be nicotine addictions or other substance use or other problems, and it's just a very hard place to be. Once the kids get going down this pathway, it's a very intense addiction, especially in their young, developing adolescent brain. And I, I think that things offered in this proposal are excellent, and I'm happy to be here tonight to support them and answer any questions that people have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I piggyback on a few of her comments? I just wanted to kind of remind you, when I was here in January 13th, a couple of months ago, we had Benjamin Kirk, the Athletic Director from Coal Ridge High School, come in and speak on, on this ordinance possibility, and I'm grateful of the work you've done to move the ordinance thus, thus far. It importantly includes two compliance checks from the town, from the Police Department of Silt. It also prohibits additional tobacco establishments or retail outlets within 500 feet of youth-serving organizations. And importantly, it prohibits the use of advertising to teens on the front of the, the, the retail establishment as well as the point of sale. And I think that's one of the things that I recall from our meeting in January, is we talked a little bit about those predatory practices of tobacco companies trying to get their next generation of tobacco users engaged in tobacco. And so just the, the very nature of a kind of a local presence with the police and, and the Clerk's Office to establish a set of protocols for what is good T-21 practices, and how can we, as a community, do a better job prohibiting or discouraging and keeping tobacco products out of the hands of teens. So I just want to say thank you again for the work you've done so far.
Thank you for the initiative.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Questions, comments?
The only comment is, is a countywide effort also, and it was important to me to be able to support this initiative in conjunction to the initiatives that are going around the county as well, especially if it is to protect our children.
90% of adult smokers started before 18, and 98% by age 26. I mean, you know, you just don't see it in people who don't start young. That's where you have your impact.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing, so I will, the time is 8:15 PM, and I'll open up the public hearing for ordinance number one, series 2025. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program, or sheel any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item.
No, sir.
Okay.
I do not show any raised hands.
All right. Would anybody in the public like to speak to this? All right. Seeing none, the time is 8:15 PM, and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number one, series 2025, as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion by Trustee Seifert to approve the second reading of ordinance number one, series 2025. That was seconded by Trustee Poston. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is the second reading of ordinance number two, series 2025, an ordinance repealing chapter 8.24, amending chapter 9.08.010, and creating title seven of the Silt Municipal Code related to public buildings, parks, open space, and recreation within the town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. And I will turn this over to Manager Mann.
Okay, as you recall, this is a rewrite or rewrite of sections of code into its own title, leaving us a little bit more flexibility in the future as we add rules and regulations respecting especially our recreation programs. I think the, a couple of the key points on this is that we no longer specify what kind of alcohol is allowed in the parks, it just can't be in a glass container. The other piece is that we clarified the hours of use of the parks, so that they are basically 7:00 AM until 10:00 PM at night, with the exception of the dog park and the preserve, which is the, basically dawn until 10:00 PM. That, I, I want to point out, because somebody did actually question whether this precluded somebody from walking through the park, if they're out walking, and it does not stop people from walking through a park on a trail, you just can't hang out in the park after hours. And, and again, this is a, an issue where it's a soft touch by the Police Department. If you're not hurting anything and you're not harming anybody, we're not going to, you know, yell at a bunch of kids playing soccer when there's a full moon at 10:30 at night, or 9 o'clock at night, or whatever it may be. So it's a, it's a light touch issue. I think probably one of the other key components in here is that we did clarify that any projection of a movie has to be a town-sponsored event, and that was in reaction to somebody wanting to come in and, and project a somewhat politically charged production.
I have a question, sorry. But there's this, it says further discuss smoking and noise in parks. I'm wanting to know if that's like supposed to be there or not.
That's just an old note that must have stuck, snuck through. We'll remove that.
Is a town sidewalk or street considered open space?
No.
Can you go through a stroll at night down the sidewalk with a beer?
It says public space is defined as sidewalks.
Could be a public space, but is that an open space?
I, sidewalks and, and streets I would consider right away. I would not consider as an open space.
Because I'm gonna take us back to the days of COVID, where we had an emergency ordinance that allowed you to walk around town with your alcoholic beverage.
And if I can add, I believe that emergency ordinance, the administrator was able to dictate the area that that could take place when we had like the block party down on Main Street, but it wasn't within the entire town.
Okay.
So should this be updated to exclude roads and sidewalks as open spaces?
Should it be excluded, or should it be included?
They're not, they're not open spaces.
Like, I can leave my house and walk to a park and crack open a beer.
Versus keeping it closed till you get to the park.
But I, but I can't, I can't drink from my house as I walk to the park.
It's a policy decision if the board wants to open it up.
Well, you can't drive to the park while drinking. I know, that was a stretch, but.
The difference between walking down a park or walking down a path in town, or walking, or being sitting in a park drinking.
I, I feel like that's a whole policy discussion, but I don't know.
See if our police chief is listening, and see if he wants to give us his.
Our police chief is not lis, I don't think, yeah, our police chief, he's on medical leave, so.
Lieutenant is on the line, though.
So what's the real concern, then?
Why is that not allowed, usually? Like, what is the safety?
Well, you have the, you have the open container ordinance that prohibits that.
Do you know why? Like, is there a safety concern specifically that what, that necessitated that poli, that rule?
I wasn't here when that, when the open container ordinance was put in place, but I would say that it is just to limit intoxicated people just stumbling down the road or stumbling out into the roadway from the sidewalk.
But I can, but I can drink in a park and then step onto the sidewalk already drunk and stumble into the road, and.
Well, ideally, you're not getting drunk in the park either.
I mean, ideally, but, I mean, if we're gonna allow alcohol use in a park, then what's the difference? My thing is, what's the difference between a street or a sidewalk?
I think there's more of a safety issue on the street or sidewalk, I think is the issue.
Yeah, I would agree. It's, it's a minor distinction, but I still think it's fairly important, when if you're going to a location to do something, it's very different from doing it while you're on the way to the location, regardless of whether you're on foot or on a bicycle, or God forbid, behind the wheel of an automotive vehicle.
Well, that's illegal.
That's, that's illegal.
That's just flat out illegal.
My point is, regardless of how you're in transport between locations, the fact that you're in transport should be the delineator.
But you're gonna be in transport leaving the park?
Yes.
After you've already drank.
Yes, but you can't have that container with you while you're in transit. Once you get to the park, once you're at a location, whether it's a bar, or a restaurant, or a park, or an event, you can consume. But when you're, when you're leaving, much the same way as when you were headed into it, you should not at that point have an open container. But that's my own distinction.
Yeah.
As it relates to the policy.
Well, and there's a distinction under the law, and I, you know, and I think it is, the idea, you know, there's people on the sidewalk who are going all sorts of different places at, at different speeds versus like if you're at that destination at the block party, everyone's sort of got that common goal, right? Versus like kids, little kids on their way to church.
Hopefully, they're not carrying open.
Well, if you collide and you get beer all over.
Yeah, there's an issue, you know, if they are.
I don't know, I mean, so I guess I see the distinction, and it just seems just like a, a big policy decision that I just, I'm not ready to.
I will just say that I'm from Wisconsin, and you don't want my opinion.
But now I do.
I mean, I'll put it out there, I think my opinion is you should be able to. If I want to get home from work and grab a glass of wine and go for a walk in the nice summer night.
Yeah, I mean, if I'm, want to walk down to my neighbor and have a beer with him, I shouldn't have to be able to put in a container, take it down, and then open it back up, when I can't walk two blocks down.
Jerry, I'm just gonna say, it's not a very good friend if he doesn't have a beer for you.
Well.
He's thinking, you bring your own.
I drink.
I'm from Minnesota, so I know.
Yeah. A lot of things in Minnesota, Wisconsin, will not pass in Colorado.
Uh huh.
So if we pass this ordinance today, what happens to that?
Mayor is walking down the sidewalk with wine in his hands.
So, I mean, the, the reality is, right now, this, this, this applies to the parks, the way this is written.
That would be an additional change, I think, if we wanted to do that.
This would be an additional change that we would have to make to define the right of way and sidewalks of whether the town wanted to allow open contents.
Okay, so we can.
And cert, I mean, and it wouldn't necessarily have to be all zoning districts, you could identify which zoning district. So if you wanted to say, if you're in a residential zoning district, you can walk around, that might preclude you from walking up and down Main Street with open containers unless it's one of the special events where the village or the town administrator says you can't, because it's a special, because it's a special event.
Because then it would become a liability concern for the business owner that sold them the beverage for their walk home if something went sideways, we're, we're creating an additional vector of liability.
And, and I will say, from a taskmaster's perspective, we are just creating title seven, so then we will have time to fine tune it.
Well, no, the, the alcohol is under title nine, it's a separate title.
Okay, okay.
But it is an ordinance, which we can always, you can change an ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty easily, so. And my, we also, I mean, we just permitted a liquor store to have a drive-through window.
Yeah.
I mean, we're worried about someone walking with an open beer, but we.
I know, you're just inviting.
We made it very convenient to drive with an open container.
Well, and I think it would make, maybe it would make Silt more fun, and then, but then it might create some safety concerns, you know, so like, as a, as a board member, I hear what you're saying, and that might be really cool, but then there might be some serious.
Well, and I think.
Issues that we're not thinking about, you know.
I think the open, the open container tickets, though, I think you would find the majority of tickets given for open container are not given by somebody that's out for a leisurely walk with a glass of wine. They're given by somebody that's intoxicated and being idiot, and has drawn attention to themselves, which is causing the open container ticket. Now granted, it does allow for them to, if they wanted to target someone, just because, they could get somebody that's just having a stroll, but most times, the majority of the times an open container ticket's given, it's not somebody just out for a leisurely stroll, it's something else going on.
Right. But legal is legal.
Yes.
I just want to make sure you're walking around with a plastic wine glass. That might be blasphemous.
I don't drink wine, what's here?
Somebody that you know.
Get the little box with the lid if you're gonna drink wine on the go.
Box in your backpack with a siphon straw.
Get the box.
Instead of one of them coolers, you know, you put water in, you put wine in.
As long as it's legal in the designated area.
Sponsored by Camelback.
We have currently exceeded this discussion by seven minutes currently.
So do we approve this just for the park space and plan to revisit the separate related topic of consumption in transit at a future date?
I say yes.
I would, I would like to have that discussion at a future date.
But does that prevent you?
No. No.
Yeah, I, and I don't want you to think I don't want to talk, like I said, I think it could be a good topic, but adding it in right now, I feel like we should probably just get this done.
Yeah, let's get this over the finish line and have that as a separate.
No, this is, it's not gonna, I mean, this is a good ordinance, as it's written, I just, when I, you know, as a citizen, you read open space, what's designated open space?
We will refer that portion to the code committee.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we're not done yet.
All right. The time is 8:29.
We have to give the public a chance.
Yep. 8:29 PM, and I will open up the public hearing for ordinance number two, series 2025. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program, or sheel any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item.
No, sir. I do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, then the time is, oh, actually, and we have nobody in the public with us, so. Time is 8:30 PM, and I will close the public hearing, open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number two, series 2025, removing the paragraph that says further discuss, or the sentence that says further discuss smoking and noise in parks, and otherwise approving it as written.
Second. All right. Motion by Trustee Inglehart to approve the. Motion by trustee Inglehart to approve the second reading of ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-five. Removing the further discussion regard, in regards to smoking and noise in the parks. That motion was seconded by trustee Brittonall. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, next up, second reading ordinance number four, series twenty twenty-five. An ordinance of the Town of Silt, Colorado, creating chapter ten point oh nine entitled Parking. Uh, the municipal code related to parking in a public right-of-way alley, street and highway or in a municipality-owned facility, park or an open space lot within the Town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. And I will turn this over to manager man.
Uh, this is just recodifying, uh, parking regulations in the town. Somewhere along the line, all the parking regulations were stripped out of the code. And when we started to look at, uh, recommendation, uh, to address, uh, parking of trailers in, uh, in town, we realized that there were no regulations regarding any parking. And so this, uh, sets, uh, definitions of various types of vehicles, what the parking lengths are, allows, uh, parking, uh, up to seventy-two hours in a, in a space uh, subject to any sign modification that is out there. Uh, it creates prohibitions of parking in any alleyway, in any municipally-owned lot for more than twenty-four hours. Uh, and as I said, there are specific rules related to trailers, vehicles advertised for sale, unattached trailers and recreational vehicles. And it does create a temporary parking permit that can be issued administratively for certain issues, whether it be medical, remodeling, uh, construction, et cetera.
Is there a timeframe on that temporary or?
Uh, there's a specific in there, but it can be extended by the administrator. It is.
Period of up to seven days.
Yeah, it's up to seven days, but the town administrator can go longer than that.
Yeah, okay.
The idea is that if somebody's remodeling their house and the contractor's parking a construction trailer out there, we want to work with them. We don't want to be in a situation where we're not allowing something like that to occur.
Were any changes made to this since the first reading?
No, there were none.
Because I know we had a, we had a pretty thorough discussion about it then, so if nothing's changed since then, I feel like I'm, I'm good with it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I am also good with it. Any?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't, you may not have been here for the first reading.
I wasn't here for the first reading.
On spring breaks, I, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, but I read through this and it looks, as written, looks good, so. I don't have any. I don't know where it all went. It used to be in the code. I, we had lengthy discussions before because we had, uh, people parking semis in neighborhoods for periods of time, so. Yeah, uh, this is a public hearing, so if there's no further discussion, I will open up the public hearing. Okay? Uh, the time is eight thirty-four PM and I will open up the public hearing for ordinance number four, series twenty twenty-five. Persons designed to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program or shield any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item.
No, I did not hear from anyone.
Okay.
I do not have any raised hands.
Okay, and we have nobody here in the chambers with us. Uh, so the time is eight thirty-five PM and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion approving the second reading of ordinance number four, series twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, motion by trustee Clausen to approve the second reading of ordinance number four, series twenty twenty-five. Seconded by Mayor Protam Hanerhan. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alls opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, next up, manager and staff reports.
Uh, the only addition that I will add to my manager report is that we did receive a request from lift-up organization that would like to appear before the board for a sixty-minute presentation to discuss, uh, food security services in the valley.
Did you say sixty, like six zero?
Can we reduce that to ten minutes? Sixty seems a lot.
I'd like to hear from them, but I, I don't know if it needs to be sixty minutes. Could we negotiate down to fifteen or twenty?
I'll work on that, yeah.
Does that seem fair?
Yeah, fifteen is fair. Sixty does seem like a long time.
It's like a lot, yeah.
And we'll, we'll direct them.
That's likely to be on the agenda and a work session, like.
That would be a third of a long meeting.
Yeah.
We'll offer them fifteen minutes and, and.
And then it gives lots of extra information?
Staff if they want to sit down at a different meeting.
Yeah, I'm okay with spending your time.
Thank you. And with that, I'll, I'm not gonna take your thunder, you can go ahead and say that.
Which one's that?
FMLD.
Oh, we did receive the grant for Eighth Street and the new scoreboard.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, nice.
That's fantastic.
So.
Job to Donald Nix Centennial, he did the scoreboard grant and he did a really good job on it.
Nice. So the, the grants were for five hundred thousand dollars for Eighth Street and thirty thousand dollars for the scoreboard. So, uh, again, uh, FMLD, uh, has been very kind to the town and we're just very appreciative.
And what was the total cost on the scoreboard? Thirty-four thousand or something?
Uh, it's like thirty-eight.
Okay.
Great job.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great news.
All right. Any other great news you got for us?
We did fill our position at Public Works with a new employee this last week, Jeremy Rippey. Some of you may know him, but, uh, he's a good hand and good to have him aboard with us.
Okay. All right, okay. Back to manager man for some more good news.
Uh, the, okay, you're gonna make me talk more. Uh, you got the Colorado River Valley Chamber of Commerce Dinner on the twenty-sixth. We have a table of eight, we need to fill it and we can get another table if there are more than eight. Um, this is not only a board member, but it is also board and spouse, so if anybody wants to. More significant other.
Saturday, the twenty-sixth.
Saturday, the twenty-sixth. Uh, from sometime to sometime.
Yep.
I'll narrow that down for you.
And I unfortunately won't be able to go.
I have it from seven to ten. I'm not sure that that's the proper time.
Okay.
Seven to ten PM?
Yeah. I know, ten PM's past my bedtime.
I was gonna say, that's either really early or really late.
Okay.
Joe, you don't have to decide tonight, you can get back to me, but we need to fill up the table.
Okay.
And get a second one if need be.
Was that right, seven?
Uh.
It's, I thought that's what I saw.
I think it starts earlier than.
Where's it at?
I think it's.
Over at the hangar, the Atlantic Hangar over at the airport.
Yeah, the same place.
Yeah.
I think it's last year's.
Yes.
Did it say six PM?
I'll get there.
You can go at six and help set up.
If they're not set up by six, it was starting at seven, they're still in trouble.
Yeah. Uh, six PM to nine PM.
Okay.
All right, I will check on that, let you know.
What, you said the hang, which hangar?
The.
The airport.
At the airport.
Airport hangar number six, which is the Atlantic Aviation Hangar.
They'll have signs and stuff.
Three seven five County Road, three fifty-two, unit two zero seven zero, Rifle, Colorado, eight one six five zero. Got that?
If you map just Rifle Airport.
Yeah, well, I know where that, where Rifle Airport is.
Last year, they had tons of signage, they had people like directing you where to go to park and everything. It was, once you turned into the general area, it was impossible to not end up in the right place.
I liked the email that I wanted to be able to tell people.
Just saying.
Okay. I wanted to say, it's gonna be at the Atlantic Hangar. Sounds cool.
It sounds very cool.
That's why I wanted to know.
And it's a Top Gun theme, right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Any other day, updates from, uh, staff members?
Quick question on the, uh, park, park drawing renderings. Originally, when we were talking about doing all this, there was talk of moving the volleyball pits from where they are to down where the swing sets are now because it's a more level ground area, might make it a little more usable. I don't know if that's still in the works or thought of at all. But I know that was like part of the original drawings and renderings when we first were talking about redoing it. It's been quite a while, obviously. But it just might be, because I know that just like in the past playing sand volleyball there with, uh, um, tennis courts being right there in that hill there, it kind of made it. I mean, it's not impossible to play, but obviously it's not as nice, it would be down in that open space if you were to move the, with those swing sets coming out where they are now, you know what I'm talking about? Just something to think about. It's not a make or break, but. Might be just, it's just an idea.
Yeah, and then that would get rid of that open space that they have designed down in that southeast or southwest corner.
Make it less free to mow.
Yeah. That's true.
You could put cornhole boards or something along there where the volleyball pits are now, who knows? Just an idea.
We can bring that up to them.
You just want horseshoe pits.
I already have horseshoe pits. They did a great job with the horseshoe pits. I'm completely happy with our state-certified horseshoe pits.
Good.
Nice.
Sanctioned, not certified, yes.
Isn't the whole park gonna be regraded anyway?
I don't.
It will be, a lot of it will be.
But, I mean, so they're taking the old tennis courts out, regrading them, and then starting over?
Yeah, we'll take them out and re.
Okay, then if that's the case, then it may not need to be moved, I don't know. I just, it was just a thought.
We'll talk to the designers and see what the grading's going to be.
Yep.
Okay. Update from the board. Board comments.
None here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Trustee Inglehart.
I made some notes for this time. It's, I won't take. So I think last meeting, we talked about the Grand Avenue improvements from Fourth to Eighth, but do, are we gonna do Ninth Street from Main to Grand?
Ninth Street, my plans are next year to try to get from Main all the way to Orchard on Ninth Street, with sidewalk on both sides.
Okay.
That way they'll bring the community from Orchard all the way down to Main Street.
Okay, cool. I like that because you see that right when you drive into town. You know, so I think it's gonna look really nice. And then I, there's a couple of times in the past couple of weeks where I saw that Rocky Mountaineer train come through and it just revived my interest in the concept of having like a, just like a, the master conceptual planner, maybe just my dream for Silt is if we had a transit center that was on Front Street where the train comes and, you know, we just heard all about the transportation needs that we have. I feel like Front Street would be a really great location for some kind of transportation hub because, you know, the train, I mean, the rail travel is not completely ruled out as, out as an option. So I just, you know, when I think about Silt and the future in transportation, I think about a transit center on Front Street. And, and maybe like parking on the roof or, you know, just, I think that could be really cool. I also wanted to mention.
I thought you were talking about a bus stop.
A bus stop at, well, a transit center could be a light rail station. And like, have you ever been to the one up in Aspen where it's got, you know, there's sitting, it's like warm rooms and they're.
Rippey Park.
Right, yes. And so it's a, it's kind of a, I don't know, you could park your bike, there's all kinds of uses, you know, and, and if there's the train and the bus and a parking ride, I mean, think about.
Well, and the landing of the pedestrian bridge would be in that area, so it would all kind of tie together.
And then I saw the Rocky Mountaineer and I thought, what if we had a stop for them?
Talk to the railroad, good luck.
Like, but that, how cool would that be? I don't, yeah, I mean, this is just, you know, my pie in the sky.
Have you seen the monorail episode of The Simpsons?
Yes, yes, and it will be nothing like that when we do it, so.
Do you want?
Feel free.
So there was a, a large, in this very room, as a matter of fact, earlier today, a large group, uh, met about regional transportation issues. There were people from CDOT, people from RFTA, uh, people from Silt Rifle Newcastle, Parachute. I don't know if there's anyone from Battle of Mesa, a lot of other community stakeholders, CMC was here, um, the EDP was here. So there was an initial alignment on strategic objectives and a willingness to get involved in next steps. So they, they broke it down to three major deliverables and then Alicia's gonna take that and work with Hannah on immediate next steps. And RFTA agreed to be involved to the extent that they're allowed to be.
Awesome.
So it, it, it's just restarting. It started early, right before the pandemic. Um, but it's restarting again and there were a lot of key stakeholders in the room and it was a productive two hours.
Well, and when I thought, thank you for that. And then when I thought about this, I thought, you know, we had been talking about potentially joining RFTA and then you commit to a certain amount of tax.
Has to be approved by the voters.
So, but I mean, I want them to just build us a transit center as part of that.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Just negotiate that in there.
I didn't mean to cut in. A part of that came up earlier today. Um, we didn't get details, but that there are other funding mechanisms that may be available. And that's where we really need RFTA to take a leading role in helping us determine if it, if not sales tax, then what? What are our other options, not just within the Town of Silt, but collectively in Western Garfield County, to fund this? And, and what do we get in return for that funding? You know, it's, we talked about board seats, whether they should be voting or non-voting. We talked about schedules, adding routes, uh, frequency, adding more stops. There were a whole bunch of pieces that came up, but it's very early on. Um, I don't remember.
Think about what we want, you know, when we're going in and so that's, I think we, you know. I think that's what I want for the town.
Jim, what is Kurt's last name, so I don't mispronounce it?
Yes.
Yes. The, the CEO of RFTA took part in the meeting today, so he spoke on behalf, literally, and said that they were very interested in growing their role west of Newcastle, which is the farthest west community that's currently enrolled.
Well, we've had now a couple of meetings in a row.
Right, and we could have some leverage there.
They're gonna court us too much as it is.
No, they're gonna ask us.
But we have, though, in the last two, last several meetings now, had public comments, people coming asking for.
Hundred percent.
More public transportation and the, the most economically feasible would probably be being more involved with RFTA because they've already got the mechanism for it and we'd just be adding on to it and getting more stops and so. Because currently, unless you're coming this way from Glenwood by eight AM or heading back that way before, if you want to go that way before four-thirty, you can't. And so those midday things would be nice for teenagers and people like today. She's talking about kids going to Rifle or going to Newcastle. RFTA would be a great way to do that, but we just don't have the stops right now.
And or like something, something for people to use that bike access from the other side of the highway to get over to, you know, the town center and then have a parking ride with bike access or some, you know what I mean? Like the things that could open things up for our residents.
Yeah, there were a lot of things covered today and then our facilitator forced us to drill down, pick the ones that mattered most and then come up with three high-level. We talked about local last mile, for example, which would be like a, a single bus or a van that would just circulate within the Town of Silt, similar to how Pats works in Parachute, or Carbondale has their own little.
Circulator.
Uh, it just runs a loop all day in the town and my kids use it regularly there to get to practices and stuff. So that last mile connectivity piece, we might be something that the Town of Silt would take on, but it would integrate with RFTA, borrow some of their infrastructure, the stops, maybe use, if they have a garage, as a facility for maintenance, those types of things. Again, I don't want to overs- oversell the outcomes because it's literally been one meeting. But it was very positive and everybody came with a readiness for change and improvement, everybody.
Awesome. Um, okay, so then I just wanted to mention that Earth Day is April twenty-second. I think that's one of the most important holidays of the year. I am on planet Earth and Silt is located on planet Earth. I think it's in our best interest to take good care of it.
We are the center of the known universe.
That's exactly right. But, so, you know, everybody do something good for Earth Day. And I was curious if we have anything planned and if not, maybe we should think about it.
I think we're doing a tree planting. Forget which date, but it'll.
Arbor Day.
Arbor Day, which will be at Bruce Meadows Park.
Okay, cool. I'll have to write that down. I'll have to write that down. And then I was, somebody, you know, somebody had mentioned with all of the construction over at 16th and Grand that, you know, just making sure we have good signage, but it seems like every day that you guys were putting up more signs, that was pretty early on, and now.
I check with them every day to make sure they have proper signage.
It's, and I think a lot of people are just having to re, just change their route, and that's just really hard to remember, once you're in the habit of going the same way every single day of your life. But, so that's all. Thank you so much for all that.
Trustee Britton.
Thank you, town staff, for all you guys do. Keep it short tonight.
Okay. Trustee Clausen.
All right, um, I have a couple of things. Um, I have heard, I, I guess, I guess people saw it on, on the sign where it says the road construction is till August. So there's a lot of people concerned that 16th and Grand is gonna be closed all the way till August. And I'm like, no, it's not gonna be closed that long. I said, the project will take that long to finish the whole thing, but.
Yeah, they have 120 days to get it.
Yeah.
Actually, they have 90 days to get it. They have to be like 90% complete in that 90, 90 days.
Yeah.
Then that last month is just to kind of clean up.
Yes, but their concern is.
We can change.
16th being, being shut down. They think it's gonna be till August. I'm like, no, it's not gonna.
No, that's, that should be through 16th by the end of next week.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, and that way, they're, right now, they're working on the irrigation in Lyons Residential to get that capped off, so we can turn on our irrigation system.
Okay.
And cap off the 12-inch water line going between those two houses. Then they'll complete 16th and move on.
Gotcha. So for the people at home, it's a couple more weeks.
Right.
Okay, and not a couple more months.
Right.
Okay. All right, so that was one. God, I got beeped.
Yep.
I got beeped already, wow. So, yeah, and, and speaking of Sheila, or whoever beeped, because we just, you know, are getting through the codes. How many codes are left on your list that we still need to go through and change?
All of them.
Okay.
It's, the list is like 60 long.
Okay.
A lot of, a lot of them fall into chapters 16 and 17, titles 16 and 17.
Okay, gotcha.
So that, that's gonna address a lot of items, but.
So we're slowly, but we're working on it.
Yes.
Just slowly pecking away.
And the ones we initially went through will have to be done again.
Correct.
Or, or replacements, as the case may be.
And another thought, I don't know if we've thought of it, or because the, uh, First Street goes up to the town limit sign, correct? And I don't know if there's any thought of, you know, possibly putting a guardrail in there someday. Because I've noticed the existing old barbed wire fence, it's down in a lot of places, and if, you know, somebody were to slip off that thing, they're, they're going all the way to the bottom. So I don't know if there's ever been any thought of possibly putting a guardrail up First Street there.
I can look into it.
Or, or, or if we feel there's even a need. So that was just something there, and is, and, you know, I, I thought of, you know, because obviously, this is the, the town's cleanup week, you know, for branches and stuff and everything. And then, you know, and looking at around town, going for walks, I mean, there's a lot of properties that just look like crap. And I mean, they have junk cars, they have just a, a lot of junk and garbage around them that need to be cleaned up. You know, so I thought, you know, because, you know, Glenwood does this too, but as, as a thought, you know, maybe possibly, in addition to those dumpsters, you know, have, you know, like a landfill voucher, you know? And, and in Glenwood, they're available upon request, so there's a certain limit to them, but I just didn't know if, to help clean the town up. I guess that, and that's, that's what I'm trying to, trying to get, is I'm trying to incentivize people to help clean up their yards, and it was just a thought to have some sort of landfill voucher, you know, and, and maybe just give one out to, you know, one property a year, some, I, I, I don't know. You know, it was just the thought of having them and have it available upon request, just so you don't have literally everybody doing it, and maybe put it, put a, a limit to how many are, are available each year or something. So it was just, that was just a thought on that. And is Nicole still here? Or no?
She was out today, I don't know.
I am.
Oh, and I'm, and I guess my question for Nicole is, okay, up on Iron Horse Mesa, I think I might have touched on it before, but I know that there is, there's a portion of that that'll be, you know, parkland or open space or something given to the town someday. Do we know when that happens? I mean, is it after Phase 1 is built out, or is it after Phase 2?
It's, so the parkland dedication is part of Phase 2.
Okay, okay. And the only reason I'm bringing this up is because, you know, yes, I mean, I understand the development parts is a private property still, but the parts that, and, you know, because I see people in, you know, side-by-sides and dirt bikes and everything up there, and my concern is the part that's gonna be the town. You know, what's gonna be developed, yeah, it's gonna be changed. But my concern is, every time I go up there, I see people cutting in new trails all over the place. You know, and for like the past 10, 15 years, there's only been like maybe one, one or two trails up there. But now, all of a sudden, you see people left and right cutting in trails. And yeah, these are the people that, that get, you know, trails across the country closed, because they can't stay on the existing ones, they all have to make their own. So that's, that was my concern, and that's why I was asking if there's any way, and there's probably no way we can speed up the process, but to try to acquire that, just so you don't have the guys on the dirt bikes just completely destroy it. You know, because it's looking like a BMX track right now. So that was, that was just my thought on, you know, if, if there's anything that we could do as a town. And yes, I understand it's all private property, so, you know, it would be up to the, them to, you know, tell people to get off, but my concern was only the portions that'll become town someday.
I don't know, I, I just, I don't know, Lieutenant Groenbach's with us, but I assume that if someone is leaving a city street on a side-by-side and exiting the roadway and cutting across private property, that's probably in violation of the H.V. ordinance.
Yeah, well, they do it on Pickett Lane, yeah.
So they should be able to ticket those people, whether it's on private property or not.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I'm just looking out for, you know, the town in the future, so it's, it, it isn't something that the town has to go clean up later.
Yeah.
It's kind of my, you know, emphasis on that. And then I had another, um, one of my friends, you know, complained about, you know, then they live up in Mesa View, and they're like, yeah, well, the, the hillside or the mountain, you know, right off my deck, it looks like they're building a, a home there and everything. And I was like, well, okay, I'll go check it out. So, so yes, you know, they are build it, well, I shouldn't say building a home. They are cutting a road in there, and I looked on the County Assessor's webpage, and yes, it's a county parcel, but if you follow the road, they're using Camarillo as their entrance to go up and cut a road on this parcel above Camarillo. So my thought is, where is their legal access? Because they're kind of an island in the county, and I don't want them thinking that, oh, hey, you know, our access is going through this subdivision, because you can, you can see the road. And, you know, looking on the County Assessor's webpage, they're not part of like Heavenly View subdivision, which is right next door. I mean, they're kind of on their own, so I don't know if they even have like a legal access. But, you know, and, and I told this person, I said, yes, that there are properties in the county, you know, so chances are the town may not be able to do anything about it, but they should not be able to, you know, drive, you know, through town property to get to, you know, their parcel.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if, if we could take a look at that, or.
Can we unmute the attorney?
And I didn't know if you guys had any information on that.
There's an ongoing research project related to that, but I'll let.
Oh, okay.
Attorney Sawyer is unmuted, I'll let him comment.
Yeah, we're, we're aware of the owner of that parcel's perception that they may have legal access to go down through the Camarillo subdivision. That issue has been raised with the owners of Camarillo. They are gathering some information. We wanna make sure there's nothing recorded and titled that potentially gives them some rights. But, uh, once we've gotten to the bottom of that, there will be a communication to that property owner that, that they're not allowed to access the town's, um, street system without proper easements and access permits.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And the only thing is, I guess, I guess someday now that the weather's nice, can we, we get our, I know school's almost out, but can we get our crosswalks painted? You know, just, just for, you know, you know, specifically, you know, to and from the school.
Yes, I, as soon as I've got a contract with Lyons Paving to do 4th Street, 5th Street, and 6th Street, and they'll come down into Grand, so as soon as those are done, we'll repaint the crosswalks on new asphalt.
Okay, nice. And, and, and I've seen Public Works crews out there trimming trees and the street sweeper, and I'm assuming you guys are getting irrigation ready?
It'll be, we'll start filling tomorrow.
All right, cool, cool. All right, keep up the good work. Those are all my comments.
All right, trustee Seifert.
I do have something, I don't know if it's for Nicole or Jim. I had a citizen approach me on our building on Main Street that's had the tarp and tires on for the last 10 years, I think. Going across from Dollar General, that building that's below ground in front. It's got tires and tarps on it, it's been on there for years, in front of the big building.
Okay.
On Main Avenue, Main Street. If you go by there, it's blowing off, and the other here, the last time we had that wind, she said that tarp flopped all night long, and it was loud, and if you look, it's about ready to blow off of there. And I don't know what our ordinance is. I mean, they've had tires and tarps on there since way back. And it's blowing, the far side, that whole tarp is about ready to come off. But she said here that last week, that wind, that tarp just flopped all night long, it was just irritating. And I went by today and looked, and yeah, that whole end is, there's gotta be something. I mean, they've had, they've had tires and tarps on that since I can remember. There's gotta be something that we can do, but she, it was annoying.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into it.
Yeah, you know, that's, because it was, she said that wind, and, you know, a tarp can get going in a wind, and she said it was very, very annoying. Uh, that's it.
Okay. Mayor Protem.
Just a quick thanks to Joe and the Public Works Group for getting the, the log bridge put back in place at the far end of the dog park. There was an old decrepit tree that had broken, and various users had stretched limbs across it, but it was fairly treacherous. Uh, so I had asked that we do something to recover it, and low and behold, I think it was last week, which coincided perfectly with the water starting to run under it, so it was perfectly timed. And thank you and the team for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
That's it.
That's it, okay. Uh, I've only got one item, and we've been over this as a town before, but I never can remember the resolution. Lyons subdivision, the fence that runs along the front edge road, the brown fence. I don't know if that's an HOA fence, or if that's a town-owned fence, but I would like the graffiti to be covered up. If it's not ours, then let's get them to get it taken care of. Um, I guess I do have a second one on top of that, too. Uh, there was a gentleman this weekend that had a dump truck parked on the bike path, cleaning out the backyard of one of those residences. And I would assume that that asphalt is not rated for a dump truck.
No, it is not.
So if we could take a walk through there and see if there's any damage, and then I can point out which house was, had the dump truck out there.
Okay.
Other than that, I got nothing else. Okay. Now the fun part. I can read my sticky note first. Once the board goes into executive session, we will not be returning to the open meeting. And that's been approved by our attorney, I assume? Okay. All right. Then I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on a specific legal question under CRS Section 24-6-4024B, and for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-40, uh, 4024E, uh, and to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real, personal, or other property interest under CRS Section 24-6-4024A in regards to the Roy Moore School District property acquisition, potential acquisition, the Corral Mobile Home Park potential acquisition, the Mark Anderson property potential, potential acquisition, and court enforcement status in the D'Amelby Park legal review. Would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, so motion by the mayor to enter an executive session for the stated purposes, seconded by Mayor Protem Hanrahan. All is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I would state real quick that I probably should not be involved in the D'Amelby Park legal review, because I'm on the board, board for the D'Amelby, for that HOA, and also own a house there. So because of that, I'll just, but that being last, I'll just step out.
Step out then, okay.
I'm a resident there too, so I'll recuse myself from that portion.
Okay. Are you on the board?
Not anymore. But there may be costs incurred.
But he's a resident, being a resident.
That I, as a resident, would be held for.
Be held responsible for, okay, all right. Understandable, so during the D'Amelby discussion, uh, Mayor Protem Hanrahan and trustee Britton will remove themselves from the chambers. All right.